Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, March thirty first, two thousand and twenty one. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and live streamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or maybe be before City Council, and profoundly will not be permitted. Please provide your name and neighborhood. For the record, you will be given three minutes. Our first speaker is Aku Hana Hamalkina. Our first registered speaker is Aku Hana Hamalkina, whom I do not see. Therefore, we'll move on to Shaman Pohmai.
Greetings, greetings. This is Shaman Pohmai. Chuck Mamiya, how are you here at the air choir? There's some saving.
It appears you're on two devices. If you could unmute yourself on your current device.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Greetings, everyone. The following municipal citizens have violated, and they've all violated their oath of office, acting in ultra viary against the United States Constitution towards the Aboriginal Americans. Article one, section two, clause three of the Constitution and excluding Indians not taxed. Attorney David L. Wood of the Citizens Police Review Board, and to include Erin Bruni and Detective Ebonansky and their attorney of the Office of Municipal Investigations, as well as Pittsburgh Police Officer C. Massesso, badge number forty-three twenty-two, and Pittsburgh Police Officer Sergeant C. Nydic, badge number forty-two-nine. An obvious admitted on color video, on video, color of law violation, forced assimilation, which is an act of genocide and war against Aboriginal American people, and excluding Indians not taxed, the so-called copper-colored people of the entire Western Hemisphere, called the Americas. They have waived their qualified immunity and conspired in a theft of Aboriginal property. We have been extremely patient and as courteous as possible, considering our rights have been both constitutionally protected and internationally protected, but have utterly been violated in a conspiracy to protect and cover up the actions of the Pittsburgh City Police Department. We will not go away, nor will we stop asserting our Aboriginal American indigenous rights according to the Delaware Treaty, which you must familiarize yourself with, clearly spells out our government-to-government relationship. The United States Constitution, House Congress Resolution three thirty-one, further supports and acknowledges our treaty, the Delaware Treaty, and our government-to-government relationship. Indigenous peoples have suffered atrocities by the hands of colonizers for many, many years too long. So we have sent correspondents requesting a clear, transparent response of the decision. We sent it to everyone on City Council, Erin Bruni, the Office of Municipal Investigations, and the requests from the Police Review Board, and have not received any responses. This will not stop. We will be formulating a campaign to bring this to light for our matriarch's proclamation. We will no longer continue to be forced assimilated and genocided upon our Inca's ancestral lands. It appears the city of Pittsburgh supports forced assimilation and genocide of the Aboriginal American copper-colored people of the Americas and excluding Indians not taxed. It is in the best interest of all involved in the act of treason to reconvene on the matter, according to our, the Iroquois Confederacy Aboriginal American Peoples and excluding not taxed government-to-government relationship for just resolution. We are finalizing our legislation and expect to fully cooperate with City Council, as is outlined in the Delaware Treaty and acknowledged in House Congress Resolution three thirty-one, one hundredth Congress, second session, and I yield.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gabrielle Gray.
Good morning, Council. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, very good. Good morning, Council and fellow Pittsburgh residents. My name is Gabrielle Gray. Homewood District nine. I pray you are all in good health today. Again, I find myself tapped out on my knees. I'm all cried out. My spirit is broken. This is no way to live. It is unacceptable for Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess to wait for funding to do his job. There was yet another shooting in Homewood last Thursday, and Councilman Ricky Burgess has not responded at all to this crisis that took place in his district. Are Homewood residents supposed to be poverty pimped amidst COVID- nineteen for a hundred thousand dollars from Hillman Foundation and wait for group violence intervention to fix a problem that is in reality caused by absent leadership? Where is the advocacy and assistance from our black leaders? How much more elevated do things have to become at this store location for our leaders to show up and support Homewood residents? We are living in fear. This business is considered a problematic location. It was shut down by the Health Department last week, and two days later, they opened back up. How is this? The day the store opened back up is the day of this unfortunate murder. Witnesses say that they have noticed drug activity at this business. Witnesses also say that the police presence at this store is not effective. Homewood residents and business owners are extremely concerned about the dangerous environment, that this business owner who is not a Homewood resident, I'm gonna say that again, this violence is created by a business owner who is not a Homewood resident, and it is dangerous. It's creating a dangerous space on this block of Frankstown Avenue. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess should have hosted a town hall safety meeting for Homewood residents after Thursday's shooting at the Homewood Beauty Supply Store, and should have provided some form of crisis support for Homewood residents. It is important to hold the city of Pittsburgh and Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess accountable for their neglect, absence of leadership, and support services during critical moments in the Homewood neighborhood. How dare you wait until you get funded to do your job? Again, it is unacceptable to have leadership that waits for funding to do their job. It is not acceptable to use space in Homewood for in-person mayoral debates and create two hundred fifty thousand dollars stop-the-violence funds, yet be entirely absent during moments of severe crisis, such as Thursday's shooting in Homewood. I yield my time.
Thank you. That does exhaust our list of registered speakers. Moving us on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith?
Here.
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Here.
We have nine members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one supplemental paper, Bill thirteen fifty-two.
Bill thirteen fifty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the city to enter into a no-cost professional service agreement to work with experts from the Harvard University Government Performance Lab to create templates, contract language, and key performance indicators for Alcon's base procurements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our first deferred paper, which is Bill twelve seventy-six.
Bill twelve seventy-six, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in the total sum of fifty-five thousand dollars in favor of Will L. and Todd J. Hollis as final settlement of all claims, costs, and fees related to this plaintiff only in the police-related action filed in the U.S. District Court, which has been pending in multiple stages of litigation since two thousand and fifteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill twelve seventy-seven.
Bill twelve seventy-seven, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Joanne Ducarre and her attorney Bernard C. Caputo in full and final settlement of litigation filed in the Court of Common Pleas, Allagany County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill twelve seventy-eight.
Bill twelve seventy-eight, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Chris Boyle Law Enforcement Consulting for professional consulting services in connection with litigation for an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Most, bill is recommended. Bill thirteen oh five.
Bill thirteen oh five, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Petregallo, Gordon, Alfano, Bostic, and Rossbenty for professional legal services in connection with civil rights litigation for an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. First new paper, Bill thirteen thirty-one.
Bill thirteen thirty-one, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of MGT of Americans Consulting LLC in an amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars relating to a case filed in the Allagany County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It will be held for executive session. Bill thirteen thirty-three.
Bill thirteen thirty-three, resolution providing for a professional services agreement for existing agreement for consulting services, but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the city Controller's Office at a cost not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second, a very brief discussion. I was just wondering if anybody from Controller's Office is here. If not, I'm happy to reach out to Controller Lamb on my own. That's fine. I'll do that. I'll reach out to the Controller. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our invoices. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. We'll now need a motion to approve the P cards.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
One abstention. P cards are approved. Thank you. That takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee, chaired by Councilman O'Connor. One deferred paper, Bill ten eighty-seven.
Bill ten eighty-seven, ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title One, Administrative Article Three, Organization Chapter one sixteen, Department of Public Safety to add a new subsection one sixteen oh one seven, prohibition on the execution of non-not warrants by requiring all city police officers when executing any warrant to physically knock and announce the presence of police before entering a premise.
A motion to approve discussion.
Second.
I actually, it's, I want to apologize. Councilman Lavelle and I did not talk prior. I assume we are making a motion to hold, but I just, I forgot to confirm this morning. So Councilman, that's my fault.
Yeah, if we could make a motion to hold for two weeks. I did have a chance to speak with Brandy this past week. She hadn't seen the information, the most recent information that I had sent her from the Law Department, and so I re-sent it to her. She wants to review. We'll probably hopefully approve in two weeks, but for now, if we could just hold it.
Okay, motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held two weeks. Thank you. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. We have one new paper, Bill thirteen, thirteen fourteen, excuse me.
Bill thirteen fourteen, resolution granting unto Northside Common Ministries, Inc., their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an existing set of entry steps and canopies at sixteen oh one Bryson Road in the twenty-fifth Ward, Sixth Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen fifteen.
Bill thirteen fifteen, resolution granting unto Frick Lender Associates LP, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a projecting blade sign at four thirty-seven Grant Street, Second Ward, Sixth Council District.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen sixteen.
Bill thirteen sixteen, resolution granting unto six oh one Grant Street Investment LP, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a projecting blade sign at six oh one Grant Street, Second Ward, Sixth Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen seventeen.
Bill thirteen seventeen, resolution granting unto Nicholas Nicholas G. and Diane Landis, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new awning at twenty-six Market Square, First Ward, Sixth Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen eighteen.
Bill thirteen eighteen, resolution granting unto Solara Ventures, the Seventh LLC, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install tree pits at twenty-six thirty-five Penn Avenue, Second Ward, Seventh Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen nineteen.
Bill thirteen nineteen, resolution granting unto Terminal Leasing, Inc., their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new concrete and wood cafe deck, two standard tree pits, and two new suspended steel canopies along the twenty-fourth Street and twenty-four hundred Smallman Street, Second Ward, Seventh Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen twenty.
Bill thirteen twenty, resolution authorizing acceptance by the city of the dedication of the Zuzun Circle recorded as Bailey Park Avenue in the Bailey Park Plain of Lots situated in the eighteenth Ward, Third Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen twenty-one.
Bill thirteen twenty-one, resolution granting unto O'Shea Dunbury, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a small blade sign that will project into the right-of-way at fifty-two twenty-seven Butler Street, Tenth Ward, Seventh Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen twenty-two.
Bill thirteen twenty-two, resolution granting unto Quality Managed Services LLC, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an existing set of entry steps at fifty-four sixteen Butler Street, Tenth Ward, Seventh Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen twenty-three.
Bill thirteen twenty-three, resolution granting unto Pittsburgh Trusts or Cultural Resources, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an existing fire escape at nine thirty-seven Liberty Avenue in the Second Ward, Sixth Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen twenty-four.
Bill thirteen twenty-four, resolution granting unto Extra Space Peace One LLC, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install seven new entrance canopies at seventy-five thirty-five Penn Avenue, Fourteenth Ward, Ninth Council District.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen twenty-six.
Bill thirteen twenty-six, resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Larima Avenue Bridge Project, and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed seven hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, and the municipal share of commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill thirteen twenty-eight.
Bill thirteen twenty-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter on behalf of the city into an energy service agreement with Energy Center Pittsburgh LLC applying obscene to the city-county building with the possibility of hot and/or chilled water in the future.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us, I believe, Councilman Kraus wants to bring a bill back up.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Appreciate your professionalism there. Yes, Madam Clerk, guide me through this, please. Do I motion to bring it back to the table, or do I waive the rules first?
We need a waiver on the rules first.
Okay, so I'm going to motion to waive the rules on Bill four eighty-two, so it may come back on today's Standing Committee agenda. Second.
I believe we need a roll call vote.
Yes.
Reverend Burgess? Mr. Coghill?
Hi.
Ms. Gross?
Hi.
Mr. Kraus?
Hi.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Cal Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Aye.
Eyes nine no zero.
Thank you. Thanks, Madam Clerk. So, Madam Clerk, guide me. Again, we've waived the rules. We've brought it back. Now do I motion to untable?
Yes.
Okay, so a motion to untable Bill zero four eight-two, please.
Need a second?
Second. And this is roll calls, well, Madam Clerk, correct?
Yes.
Reverend Burgess?
Hello.
Mr. Coghill?
Hi.
Ms. Gross? Excuse me, Ms. Gross.
Hi. Sorry, I've got my screen cluttered up.
Mr. Kraus?
Hi.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mrs. Cal Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Aye.
Eyes nine no zero. Bill is on table.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have four then, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, just briefly, this was a projecting sign at fifteen oh five East Carson that there had been some debate about, and I had asked members two weeks ago to table. I believe this business had closed. There is a new owner on this business. This is a new application that does not relate to the previous owner at all, and so I am asking for your approval then to approve the projecting sign at fifteen oh five East Carson, Bill four eighty-two.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended.
Thanks, everybody.
That takes us to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. One supplemental paper, Bill thirteen fifty-nine.
Bill thirteen fifty-nine, ordinance amended Title VII Business License in Article Ten, Rental of Residential Housing Chapter seven eighty-two, temporary eviction regulation for disease prevention and control due to the COVID- nineteen to strengthen its policy directives from certain technical and substantive revisions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I'll defer to Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. So, members, we've had a lot of versions and emails from the Law Department in the last twenty-four hours. I think there's been several. So what I want to do today is, I don't know if we've got a version sent out by the clerk, because we were all just working on it to try to make sure that the headers and footers weren't confusing, but what I'd like to do is just discuss the most recent version from law as the amended version.
Yes, we did send the last version again across.
So that's just been sent to all members?
Yes, all members should have that.
Great. So you've got it.
Yesterday, too.
You've got it yesterday, but just because it's confusing, I just was asking the clerk's office, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, for scrambling to do that, so that you can see that in front of you. And, did you get it? Actually, I don't see it.
I don't have it.
When I have my, here it is.
Mine's still being scanned process.
Okay. I'll just wait a minute, and I'll just say my thank yous first then, because this has been an ongoing conversation since we discussed this really very nearly a month ago, four weeks ago easily, and it's been a lot of give and take. It's been a lot of learning. I distinctly remember, you know, before we voted a month ago, a lot of our own solicitors saying, look, we're not housing attorneys, right? We don't necessarily know what happens at a magistrate's office. And so there's really been a very positive exchange of information among people who are at the magistrate's offices, who are, you know, with the solicitor's office, kind of understanding what we needed to make things clearer for our own city departments, clear for the public, clear for magistrates to know what to do here. And a reminder, I think we all were very moved by the testimony we've gotten over the last six weeks, and by the level of crisis that we have exacerbated by COVID currently in the city. And really, this is just the beginning, unfortunately, of, I think, what we need to deal with as public officials. We are in some ways just forestalling an even bigger problem, because after these moratoriums end, I can, I don't think any of us understand how big the problem is, and how high these numbers could go in terms of evictions. We're increasingly seeing evictions motivated by property flipping, and I think I've seen them in Beechview and Brookline, and probably almost every council district. And so there's even seems to be a shift of ownership that is probably its own public policy issue that we also are trying to do research about. But for now, what we have in front of us is a give and take. Where our Law Department got some of the coverage they were looking for, not in the ways that they initially wanted, but I think it made the legislation stronger and more defensible. There was a removal entirely of that kind of certificate that tenants could apply for for hardship, because honestly, it was just too confusing, I think, to be effective. There's a clarification on the meaning of eviction, so that it kind of is more implementable and went to in front of a magistrate. There is a better, again, with more legal precision of the justification of good clause, and a breakdown, really a breakout. You'll remember that the earlier version had fines up to ten thousand dollars. That range caused implementable problems for a number of reasons. Imagine being, you know, being the Commission on Human Relations and being in front of a magistrate, and how do you argue whether to be one dollar, nine thousand nine hundred, or ninety-nine dollars, or anything between? So there's actually kind of a breakout of suggested fine amounts, generally lower than, you know, ten thousand. fine amounts generally lower than, you know, ten thousand, right? But there is a significantly higher one, especially for households, um, with children in the home. And I think that's good, um, and just. So, again, thank you to all of the people who have engaged in so many hours of conversation about, well, how to make this workable, including, again, many city departments, the mayor's office, the solicitor's office, many of our good advocates who are on the front lines watching these cases, um, every week. Um, so, and of course, the Commission on Human Relations, who is shouldering, um, so much of this work. Um, and we, I think, will need to keep our eyes on it, as we said last month, right? Now that it's finally beginning, uh, we're going to need to keep our eyes on it to make sure that the work doesn't overwhelm the capacity, because that wouldn't be good for anyone, wouldn't be good for the tenants, for the landlords, or for our own city departments, and certainly for our own city employees. So, um, with that, I think we all have it probably loaded up, so I will motion to amend by substitution.
Second, discussion?
Yes, of course.
Amendment, Councilman Kraus.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, so, um, oh, what I see, I'm, I'm supportive of, um, I it's, it's, it's important that we take the recommendations of law department under consideration when crafting these kinds of, um, somewhat controversial ordinances. The, the last thing that we want to do is to complicate uh, or confuse matters to the point to where, uh, good intended legislation cannot be implemented because of, uh, the, uh, possibility of legal challenge, which we have, I understand we have done in the past. Um, and, uh, uh, ultimately not being able to accomplish, uh, what we intended to do. Um, and so I, uh, am in agreement with the changes that I have read. I have just a couple really brief questions. If, uh, Mister Chair, you'll permit interrogatory?
True.
So, Councilwoman, the, the version that I have, I think, is a combination of a number of versions. Um, it, you know, assembled. But what I see in front of me now, the yellow highlighted uh, text is what we're adding to this latest version now. Am I correct in assuming that?
I'm going to have to kind of peer at my screen to be sure of.
How about if I read it?
No, I do see, I see the yellow version for sure, but I would have to actually have it side by side with what I submitted yesterday. So I'm going to have to, I believe this is an amendment of what I submitted yesterday, not of the March second legislation.
Gotcha. So I believe that.
It's for, yeah, for us to talk about the versions compared to March second, you would have to have all three in front of you.
Okay. So I, I'm going to just read quickly the highlighted language that I believe is what is under consideration here now, and it is, uh, it reads as follows. Um, that for purposes of this chap, chapter, a COVID nineteen related hardship may be demonstrated by credible evidence that said tenant has lost income due to the pandemic and setting forth facts that provide an explanation of the COVID nineteen financial hardship shop suffered and how such hardship has rendered timely payment of the rent impractical. And then, uh, further down in section B, the commission cell also make outreach materials available regarding rental mortgage and other assistance programs, which I agree with, uh, relating to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And then, uh, further down, uh, there is a shift, uh, but I believe this was what was, uh, already submitted yesterday, that the fine is not ten thousand, it is reduced to a thousand, and it is, the language reads up to one thousand, and in some conversation with law department, there was some thought that there could be a consideration to remove the up to, but law is recommending that that not happen. Are you in agreement with that, Councilwoman? I.
So thank you for catching. That is a very, you've really been paying attention. So I have had extensive back and forth, especially about the up to. And I would like the opportunity to talk to law further about that between now and Tuesday. So here's the rub. When you provide the range, I'm told, which we often do in lots of our ordinances. Um, it provides and that opportunity for discussion that, as I just described. So imagine you're the community, the commission on human relations, facing kind of enforcement's, um, debate at the magistrate's office, right? You're holding a landlord, um, to compliance or in violation. Um, so you file a complaint at the magistrate's office, you're there, you're the, the landlord is the defendant, the commission on human relations is the plaintiff, and you're in front of a magistrate. Now, if our ordinance says an exact dollar amount, like one thousand dollars, it is not really a debate. But if there is a range up to one thousand dollars, then there's a much longer discussion about the kind of degree of violation. There's a, a more of a time burden in preparation for that discussion on the commission for human relations. And I, yes, we went, we had a lot of conversations, especially in the last two weeks, about the upsides and downsides. Um, I don't see any downsides to striking out the up to. Um, and I, I, like, you know, I've asked and I haven't heard why, so I'm wondering if it was just out of habit or if there's a really good reason. So I, I really appreciate you highlighting that, because if there was anything between now and Tuesday, I would strike out, and I really had to deliberate this morning and last night about whether to even hold one week or to go ahead and pass this version today, because it's hard to know how much that will multiply out. Will there be, you know, a lot of enforcement? Will there be a lot of, you know, um, landlords being held for violation at the magistrate's office? It's really hard to know. And if there's no downsides for striking out the up to, um, then I would be in favor of striking them out. But this version is the last one from law, and I really thought, like, should we, should we wait a week? Try to go back to the negotiating table over this couple of words? Or should we just, you know, go ahead and move forward today? And, and this morning, we decided to just go ahead and move forward today.
So.
That was a key question, Mister Kraus.
That's my hope. I would prefer that we move forward today with that language in place. What I don't want, uh, to see happen is good intentions being, uh, sidetracked by, um, certain, uh, parties wishing to contest this in court and further harming people that we only wish to help. And the further that it is delayed, the, the harder it is to implement and enforce. And while the, uh, the courts are deciding, people are losing their homes. And that's, that's the risk I'm really, will, I can't speak. That's the risk I'm willing to take. I, I would like to keep the language in place, make certain that, uh, you know, we, we are in agreement with recommendations that are coming from our solicitor this time around, uh, with the hope that this will not be challenged, that we can indeed enforce, move forward, uh, and protect the constituency, uh, that we intend to do, uh, uh, with the new language. So that is my hope, that we will do that. I, I am, I still have reservations about the capacity of HRC to be able to assume this.
Which is why I would strike those words, but so that's, that's the connection here. That's the, 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 trying to weigh safety with functionality.
It's a heavy lift. It's a really heavy list of lift to be asking of them to do. We, it, it's a, it's an unforeseeable future. We just don't know how many cases could be coming, uh, down. Uh, and, and, and the kind of impact we may be having, uh, on them. So, but as this exists here and now, I prefer, uh, the version that I see in front of me. I will support the version I see in front of me. Uh, I'm happy that we are, uh, engaged with, uh, legal counsel and, uh, understanding the, you know, how to avoid the pitfalls uh, and, and get an effective piece of legislation in place that does indeed serve. And, you know, I, I'm going to share this story, uh, just because it was so touching. You know, there are, there is pain on every side of this argument. Everyone is, uh, is, is suffering. And, uh, you know, uh, the councilwoman has, at times, not at times, many times, profusely, uh, protected uh, small landlords that have, you know, small properties that are, are, you know, vital to their income. And I, I was in the post office and I ran into a small landlord, um, here. Um, and I watched him tell me his story as tears were welling up in his eyes about he's, he's facing the loss of, of just everything else. Three small properties. Uh, but you know, it's, you know, we talked a little bit about the CARES Act, money coming in. Uh, won't be anywhere near enough to cover the losses that, that he is suffering. He, he understands the pain of the, of the tenants, and he's doing everything in his power to protect and, um, uh, them and, but, um, you know, the, the pain, it just, it goes, it covers so many portions of this, of this argument. And so I, I ju, I just, I feel good about legally sound, you know, um, defensible, hopefully not adjudicated legislation that can hit the ground running and accomplish that the, uh, the work that we are, uh, you know, challenged to do here. And that is to, uh, to assist those that are suffering with, with eviction and to, to make certain that we get through this difficult time to the best benefit of everyone. So thanks for your work, Councilwoman. Thank you for, um, I know Lindsay, I believe Lindsay Powell was still engaged in this version. We certainly want to thank her and want to thank law for taking the time to advise us. And, um, as I see this, I, I would ask members to please support. Thank you very much.
If I may, Mister Chair, I just reiterate, and I, I wish I was, like, I wish I had like an infomercial right now on how to, um, for landlords and tenants to call for the rent relief program that is now open and wasn't. Um, it was imminent when we first passed this bill, but is now open and can make landlords whole for both backwards and forward rent. So, you know, I don't know the particulars of the case you described, but if it's only rent, um, then that should be made whole one hundred percent. Um, if he said other kinds of losses, we'll see, but.
So.
There are many millions, um, that's in play here.
The, uh, if, Mister Chair, if I may just one time, honestly, a personal brief, uh, what he was sharing with me was property liens against his small properties for utilities because of the way.
It includes utilities.
Yeah, but.
The new within her reward includes utilities.
Uh, but at this point in time, he was facing liens on those properties because of, uh, uh, the way his leases were written and that his responsibility was the, um, uh, was the, um, utilities, but, uh, tenants were advised, were.
Well, please reach out, yeah, please reach out to him, because back to March twenty twenty, he can be made whole for all of the utilities and all of the rent.
Yeah, I, I may actually just do that with you if, uh, if you're amenable to that. He, um, yeah, I just, I, you know, I know well, he's a neighbor. I mean, I've known him forever. It just, you know, and I'm sitting there watching with tears in his eyes, like, you know, I'm, I'm drowning here, I'm losing everything. So it's, there's just, there's pain on every side of this equation and, uh, and I'm, I'm very, very how, um, grateful that, that we're at a point to where I truly believe this can hit the ground. It can to the ground running. We should not face legal challenge, and we can actually accomplish the work that we, that we so desperately need to do. So thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Other members? Councilman Wilson?
Just for clarification, I, uh, I heard Councilman Kraus, um, read the, the highlighted part. And if I'm mistaken, I thought it was said that that's the only part that's added, but everything on, the way I see is everything underlined is added.
So that, I'm sorry that there was just so many, so many changes that we got just last night. We would have been able to clean it up a little bit, um, better if we hadn't just been doing it this morning. So the, um, the underlying section is different than the March second version, right? So that's part of the legislation that I hand, that's the legislation I handed in yesterday.
So the, yeah, the underline version, uh, the underline words that I see are, were non in March second, is what you're saying?
Right.
Right. Okay.
Yep.
You're looking at the full version of a number of iterations.
Yeah, yeah.
With the yellow being the most recently added, as opposed to the underline, which was added a little sooner.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah, sorry, it's, it looks like that Louise is helping. We're all kind of scrambling together at the same time, and I appreciate it. And I think, I think this law did it so that we could see that too. So the, the yellow version, it was, was, was added between basically yesterday and today.
Well, I think the yellow version is what is, uh, uh, the recommendations at law.
Between, yes, that they recommended between yesterday and today.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Any other members? Seeing none, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Thank you for your hard work, Councilman, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you all for your support, and I want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Strasburger, too, who kept checking in with me throughout this process, offering her help. I appreciate it.
Uh, first.
One second.
Was that just the amendment?
Yeah, with a good point.
The amendment by substitution vote.
So any discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is recommended. Thank you. Uh, new paper, Bill thirteen thirty-four.
Bill thirteen thirty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of city planning to enter into a memorandum of understanding and or in amended memorandum of understanding with the National Resource Defense Council in support of the American cities climate challenge, the MOU shall be at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill thirteen thirty-five.
Bill thirteen thirty-five, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh code Title Nine zoning article one, section nine oh two oh three zoning map by changing from R M H, multi-unit residential high density to L N C, local neighborhood commercial, sixteen parcels in Allegheny County Block and Lock System, twelfth Ward, and changing from R I D H, single unit detached residential high density to L N C, local neighborhood commercial, thirteen parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lock System, twelfth Ward.
Motion to approve for, um, cable cast public hearing.
Uh, second.
Technically, motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held. Thank you. Next, that takes us to our Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. One supplemental paper, Bill thirteen fifty-three.
Bill thirteen fifty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into a no-cost professional services agreement to work with experts from the John Hopkins University Center for Government Excellence to elevate data governance practice across the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Our new paper, Bill thirteen thirty-eight.
Bill thirteen thirty-eight, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with certain individuals in conjunction with the Department of Innovation and Performance pro code, oh, program that will provide additional support for the innovation initiative at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Internal Government Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Uh, one deferred paper, Bill six thirty-four.
Bill six thirty-four, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for proposed land development located at three sixteen South Highland Avenue.
Motion to hold six weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held six weeks. Bill thirteen twenty-nine.
Bill thirteen twenty-nine, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan. Bill 1329, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 3500 Forbes Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Uh, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1330.
Bill 1330, Ordinance Authorizing the City to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Corporation Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services with regard to Medicaid reimbursement services for a term of three years plus one possible two-year extension at the party's mutual option. The agreement shall result in net revenue for the city, but will require upfront expenses in an amount not to exceed $1,363,810 annually for a total amount not to exceed $6,819,050.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
So I'm honest, I didn't get a briefing on this bill in particular, so if members have any questions, it's a significant amount of upfront money, but it's, you know, part of an ongoing contract. And um, it just looks like a different payment structure so that we, in the end, save money. But other than that, I, I don't know anything beyond what, what I'm reading. So if there's any questions, I don't know if there's anyone here from the administration.
I'm good.
Any other members? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Um, huh, that exhausts our agenda for today. So we do have our meeting announcements. Um, this is just a reminder that this Friday, April 2nd, is Good Friday, and city offices will be closed in observance of the holiday. Next week, council will hold their regular standing committee meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday, April 6th and April 7th at 10 a.m. Please fill out the signup form on the council meetings schedule webpage by 9 a.m. next Tuesday and Wednesday to register to speak at these meetings. You may also register to speak by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Are there any announcements from members? Councilman Kraus?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, Councilman Coghill?
Yes, sir.
I have something on my calendar for 1 o'clock tomorrow, but I, I'm not sure I remember what it is.
You know what? I keep thinking it's an April Fools' joke, so I hope it's not.
No, no, tomorrow, yeah, we are, after years of, years of work uh, and dedication, uh, are gonna uh, break ground on the new uh, fourth uh, Public Works Fourth Division. Um, in the wonderful neighborhood of Knoxville, but serving the third council district councilman uh, uh, Coghill and council president Teresa Kell Smith. So we'll be there at 1 o'clock tomorrow and uh, to break ground, I know there's gonna be, we've invited a number of constituents, we hope constituents will come out and, and see. I know uh, of the elected officials from uh, South and West Pittsburgh will be there as well too. I know council president will be there, uh, Councilman Coghill, myself, the mayor will be there to make remarks. Um, and all in all, uh, how about the irony, uh, Councilman Coghill, that uh, of, of any day to, to pick to do this, we have weather, this can be 30 degrees and probably snow. So.
It's okay. I, I, that's okay. I love it. Uh, you know, it's symbolic that we are building in this pandemic and that we're moving forward. And again, I want to thank you and the Council Madam President and the administration for, you know, all doing the hard work to get us to this point. Really looking forward to it. I don't care if it's five degrees, you know, as long as this thing's up and ready for next winter, we'll be in good shape.
Yeah, we have, we, uh, we, we face some significant challenges in the process. Um, you know, it, but we worked through all them. We may have some in the future as well too. There are a number of different permits that have to be secured to do the kind of a campus that we want to uh, to do there for the new fourth division. But uh, you know, we believe we've got great professionals in place and clearly the support of the mayor and the mayor's office and to, to keep things going and uh, in the right direction. So I am sincerely hoping that uh, come next fall, we'll be talking about um, how uh, uh, the division is up and, and running and functioning. So how to get that in, Anthony. It's a long time coming, huh?
It's true.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other members? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.